My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as well.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of May 13th, 2013. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to the minutes of the Village Board Meeting, April 22nd, 2013. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have the minutes from the Village Board Work Session, May 6th, 2013. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I would like to thank Deputy Mayor Char for filling in while I was at the New York Conference of Mayors Conference. I also want to thank Sarah Winters, our Treasurer, for filling in tonight for Village Clerk Strobel, who is getting some much-needed rest. And Sarah's also here to make sure all the trustees sign their vouchers, so she's going to be checking everyone at the door. I also want to introduce Mr. Chris Mafflet, he's sitting in the back of the room there. Chris is going to be doing some mentoring work with the Village Board this summer. He's a student going into his third year of college, and he's excited, he has an interest in government and a number of other things, and looks forward to having him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right, moving on to Communications. First letter, Orange County Department of Health, Larbicide and Catch Basins. The Orange County Department of Health has contracted with Allimore, Inc., Pest Master Services to provide larbicide application to municipally-owned catch basins. The larbicide we use will be Alcid for gets. This will prevent mosquito-reared catch basins. Pest Master Service experts expect to start larbiding your town, village, or city beginning May 8th. It will be vehicles identified as belonging to Pest Master Service and workers will be carrying identification. Mosquito experts from the Orange County Community College will continue to trap throughout Orange County until October 2013. Employees will carry identification. If any questions are concerned, let's contact the Department of Health. Any questions or comments on that? It's always nice to have the county take care of something for us here locally. Next, we have a letter from the Goshen Chamber of Commerce. Dear Mayor Ryan and Village Trustees, the Goshen Chamber of Commerce is in the process of planning for the upcoming 32nd Great American Weekend. The event will be returning to Church Park on Saturday, July 6th, and Sunday, July 7th. The Chamber and the Great American Weekend Committee greatly appreciate the support and cooperation of Village Goshen prior to and during the event, and the Chamber of Commerce respectfully requests for the Village to once again be a joint sponsor for the Great American Weekend and to provide the required insurance coverage under the Village policy. We will keep the Village informed of all planned activities and schedules as details become available to us. We look forward to working together again this year to make the Great American Weekend a huge success. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Maureen Patrini, Great American Weekend Committee. Always a great event for the Village, brings a lot of people into town, and it's always a favorite of mine, I know. I'd like to ask the Board to ask for a motion to approve this request. Is there any comments or any of the Board members?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Another letter from the Great American Weekend Committee. Dear Mr. Lewis, the Goshen Chamber of Commerce is in the process of planning for the upcoming Great American Weekend. The event will be held on Saturday, July 6th, and Sunday, July 7th. The Great American Weekend Committee would like to submit a request for permission to place signs in the following locations prior to the event. Four signs at the entrances to the Village, election signs, campaign signs, a sign in Church Park, same as last year but updated, a sign for the hayrides, various temporary signs throughout the park during the event. We would like to place these signs during the first week in June and will remove them immediately after the event. Thank you for your consideration. This sounds like a great idea. Our Building Inspector has no objections to this request, so we'd like to move forward. Certainly, it's always helpful to get the message out early, just so people can plan their weekends, and this is a busy time of year for people. And also, as people do travel into the Village, they can be reminded about all the great stuff we have coming up. Can I have a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And again, to be clear, they're out for a finite period of time. I guess sometimes we get these requests and we ask them to come back and say when they're going to take the signs down, but that's not a problem here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have a letter from Young's Grove Sewer Service Request. I'm going to read through the letter and then open it up to Mr. Esposito, who I believe is going to be doing a presentation for the Board. Dear Mayor Ryan and Village Trustees, with this letter, we are requesting a spot in the available Village Board Meeting Agenda to discuss the possibility of Village Goshen providing sewer service to the bond reference project. I have attached a project summary, a location map, and a 105-lot alternate plan for your review. We look forward to working with the Village on this matter, as we believe it is good planning to utilize existing infrastructure. The potential future sewer service will also provide financial benefits to current Village and Town residents, served by the Village's wastewater treatment plant. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Should you have any questions, please, on his date, call our office. I will turn it over to Mr. Esposito.
Thank you. I did bring some copies if anybody on the Board needs them. If not, then everybody sit. Just to let you know, Young's Grove with me tonight is Steve and I and Reeder. They're the principals of Young's Grove, a local family that has been in the construction business for three generations, at least. It feels way more than that, right? It's a project that we're in the town of Goshen, it's down on Craigville Road. We have gone through the environmental review process, which we have, findings have been filed and we're finalizing the preliminary drawings for ultimately preliminary approval. After that, we'll get to the agency. During the environmental review process, we looked at two alternatives for treating sanitary sewer. This is 105 units. Once you go over 49 units, in the state of New York, you have to provide such facilities. It's going to have its own standalone water system. We've drilled three production wells. They were very, very good wells. We went through a battery test for those, and that's in process, and we'll give permits for those in the DEC. The other thing that you have to provide, really subdivision, is that sewer, either connecting to an existing plant or facility, expansion, or providing onsite. We looked at two alternatives. We looked at one alternative, which is coming to the Village via force main, and we looked at doing onsite, an onsite plan as well. As part of the onsite plan, we did what's called a waste similar capacity analysis on the creek or stream that we would be ultimately discharging yet from that plant. It's more than capable of treating or receiving the amount of flows that we have anticipated to have about, the project will generate about 42,000 gallons a day of sewage and have the same amount of water use. We, again, we're now reevaluated, we're finalizing the preliminary plans, and we've looked at the numbers, basically, and we think that the force main and the onsite plant financially is about a wash for us. We think that, given that fact, we think it's a much better solution, long-term planning, is to really take advantage of the economy and scale that the Village is committed to this community, and we also prefer not to be in the sewer business.
I don't blame you.
That's right. You can dismiss rate with that, I'm sure. And what we'd like to do is investigate or open up the discussion with the Village of being an outside customer. We would obviously have to do one of two things in terms of the administration, similar to other projects in the Village, or in town of Goshen where the Village is providing the service. We would either petition a town to create a sewer district, or under a transportation corporation, we would form a transportation corporation and be an outside customer. And we're prepared to do, take those steps. But we would like to, at least before we do any of that, is at least talk to you first to see that there's some interest within the Village, receiving the sewage, and again, it'd be about 42,000 gallons a day. They're about at building. And that's really where we are. If you have any questions for me, or...
Where would the connection point to the Village?
We would actually connect, we're looking at two alternatives for the force main. The site is located on Craigville Road. The vehicular access will be on Craigville, from Craigville. We also are going to extend, if you look at the plan, one of them, there's an old right-of-way that comes up to Broadley Road. The road that pay service stops a couple hundred feet from the site, we would be responsible for extending that road into the site to allow another alternative connection for vehicular access. We would actually come down Broadley Road to Old Chester Road, and we would do, at that point in time, one of two things. And really, it's kind of contingent upon the heritage, is we could either look at going through the heritage site, and either tying into their force main on their site, or just stay right on Old Chester Road, go right down Old Chester Road and connect to the gravity system on South Church Street. So that would be really, the connection ultimately, depending on the routing, would ultimately end up on South Church Street.
I'll just make a few comments. You and I have spoken about this, Steve, and this is new to most of the Board members, I believe. Certainly, the Village definitely has excess capacity, that's well-known, well-documented. Everyone talks about the cost of sewer rates in the area, and we, unfortunately, the only way to bring down the cost of sewer rates is to get more users. I believe, me personally, I'd love to see more commercial users elsewhere that we could contribute sewer service to, but I don't think it's mutually exclusive at this time. I think, given the fact that on an average day, we use about 1.25 million gallons of sewage, and we're permitted for two, I think that it really makes a lot of sense to bring in more users. There was an interesting piece written by a pattern for progress recently, that spoke about the declining school numbers, and how enrollment's going to continue to decrease. And, well, we're not the town planning board, and if the Village doesn't want to be in a position to increase development in the town outside of our boundaries, I think that it would be a positive thing for the community. So I'd be in favor of moving, working towards some kind of agreement. As you know, we do have an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Goshen right now that allows these things, and there's other venues as well for that. Speaking for myself, I think it would be a good thing, and I think it makes sense to me. Do the Board members have any comments or questions?
You know, I've talked about this a number of times while I'm on the Board here, and I'm always in, by and large, always in favor. I'm in favor this time around, too. We need users. This, you know, is what's going to help you get the planning, and that's up to the town on their side, but I'm certainly in favor of doing it.
Estimated daily use?
About 42,000. Based on the state guidelines, it's about 42,000 gallons.
42,000, yeah.
Yeah, I would just add, I've been on the public record here as Mayor and Deputy Mayor Char, as being very much in favor of more users, and it's something we've talked about for the last five years. We've both, three of us have been here together, and something that we see as a way to try to help us pay for that wonderful new sewer plant we have. So I'm in favor of this.
Steve, so the water, how do you provide that for, I mean, and this is a curiosity question, but it kind of lites into the sewer aspects of it. So are people going to, they're going to have centralized water supply that's going to provide to them, is it going to be metered to each household, and then they're building visually for the water?
Yes. We'll have, we'll just, Pete, just a real quick description of it. It's free production well that actually well exceed what the minimum requirements are under the state code.
Right.
In terms of source.
Sure.
Lobstam pipe, you know, well, which will have 24-hour domestic storage, as well as fire protection. We've actually reviewed the plants with a fire company, with regards to street layout, grades, hydrant testing, spacing, and so they just kind of single up on it, so.
Because my question is, is this being not connected to anything that's through the town, is this something that we can do directly, as, without any...
Like I said, I'm sorry, Pete.
Okay, without any intermanitiable agreement with the town?
That was going to be my question, is the town looking for an expansion to have the Tony Park Sewer District to accommodate this, and to try to include you in that district?
Well, we're not, this site isn't contiguous to the...
I know.
And it's good, it's more than a stone's throw away from the Hamletonian. We do, I don't think we have bused the existing water district for, what subdivision is this?
Stonehenge.
Stonehenge. But we do, but their stamp fight is actually a joint out of parcel. So the town did ask us for a, like, an emergency connection for them, for our water, because we do have excess water, in case of river, their well is down. But there's no plans for sewer, sewer extension of the Hamletonian, that water, at least not yet.
So, to Pete's question, would this be a private, if you will, private arrangement, or would this be a town district?
Well, it's too early, we have, it's too early for us to answer that question. You know, there's two opportunities, there's two options available to us. One is the town forming a district or expanding a district. I don't know if you can leapfrog, but, or they could just create a new sewer district.
The town is going to think that's a step.
That's right.
Or we're also prepared to do the transportation corporation.
But to answer Pete's question, I mean, if there's, I mean, I know there's an agreement in place...
I know, but I guess my, so my question is, is, okay, so if you're metering every household out there, we can build them the same way we built in the Village here.
Why can't we just direct a bill to every household?
And so...
There may be a legal reason for that.
Because in the Village, if we build a homeowner for sewer and water, and they don't pay, we can be levy on their tax bill. We have no recourse to the fair enough motion.
Yep, there you go.
Well, I mean, I think... There's mechanisms for doing it. There's mechanisms that can probably get past that as well. They might be able to speak to that on a legal side.
That could be an issue that would come up.
Levy on that whole thing, so.
I mean, the other issue is that if it's a transportation corporation, the law requires that they provide this mechanism called a transportation corporation that we would contract with if there was going to be a private, if you will, private food treatment facility out there. But that also requires the consent of the town board. The formation requires the consent of the town board. So either, either way we do it, we're going to be involved in that situation.
Well, my, just to be on the record, I'm in favor of it either way it goes, but my preference would obviously be if it's a direct agreement between the development and the Village, without getting billed through the town billing you for your services, and then billing us and paying us, and that whole kind of thing, if there's a way that can be done, that can be done. Would probably be things simpler if it is a way to be done. Especially if you have the households who need it.
Pete, whatever we do, we'll make things simpler.
Huh? Might be a future, long running.
It sounds like receptive, first, you have any questions or comments? I think that you have a receptive earpiece in us, and I don't think you need any action by us tonight, just other than there's no other way to start, I believe.
I would think if we could just have maybe a confirming letter from the Village, if that's at all possible, that we're here and that you don't see that there's an issue with providing services.
Steve, it's not a secret, right? You've been to the, obviously, the town is very well aware of...
Right, we're getting, we're going back now, and we're now going to present the force main and that whole business, but we wanted to use touch base with you to make sure that there was, that there was an interest in it, in this capacity.
Well, you know, from having been here before with other projects that support, that one standing for the group of us that have been on here for a while, you guys now look like you're going to be the first ones, so we'll have to work out the even out of that and that sort of work.
And we do have a framework, but we can always look at options, but I think right now, the Board is receptive, and I have no problem putting that in writing, and going from there. And obviously, there's a whole lot of things we need to work out between now and going over the finish line. But we have the capacity, we want users, and period.
Perfect.
And we're prepared to do whatever takes the, the, the Village, so.
Great.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. The abstract vouchers. Bills as examined by members of the Board were approved in accordance with abstract 2012-2013, number 13, check number 5218, for 5398, for a total of $1,477,895.20. And again, as we always say, these are all bills that have already gotten through the process, been scrutinized by the trustees, the treasurer, and move forward. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that before I?
Aye.
No, I wasn't sure. You never know what happens in this game. All right, we have a higher resolution. Ian Mertens is hereby appointed laborer for the Village of Goshen Department of Public Works. In accordance with the current contract between the Village of Goshen and the CSEA, Ian Mertens will be placed on the 2013 Step 1 of the pay scale for laborer, an annual salary of $33,793. This appointment will become effective upon successful completion of additional employment paperwork, and shall include a probationary period of six months. Just to get a little backstory on this, Ian's been working with the department for how long, Sarah, as a seasonal person? A number of, a few months, I believe.
About four.
Yeah. The Village of Goshen, we had one employee that left the department back in December, I believe?
September.
September, okay. So we had one employee that left the department a number of months ago, and we also had another employee that resigned effective in April. So the DPW is down to employees, so this is just making Ian full-time. And while we all know the challenges that we have financially, I think it's a very fair deal to have two people replaced by one, and I think it's something that is going to help Mike get the job done, that he continues to do well, and also helps the taxpayers get those services for reasonable costs. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any Board member comment?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, I've been a member with Ian at the Dykens, but he's been a member for a number of years. Those of you that see him around and met him, he's a very big, strong young man, very hard worker. Michael's been very, very happy with him, and he's a good kid, and I think he's going to be a real plus.
Thank you. All right, there's no other comments? I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have our 2013-2014 part-time rates. These are rates for our non-union part-timers. Following rates for current part-time employees will become effective June 1st, 2013. Court officer, 1485. Dispatcher, 1625. Police officer, part-time, 2216. And clerk, part-time, 15 dollars. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have the scholarship recipient, whose name will remain nameless until the night of graduation or the scholarship ceremony, but they're definitely a great individual. On a motion, on a motion, Village of Goshen is, so-and-so is hereby chosen to be the recipient of the Village of Goshen Scholarship for 2013. The scholarship award, funded by the Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program, is the amount of $2,000. And again, that's a grant that comes from the county, so not coming out of the Village taxpayer dollars. Can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a planning board appointment. We have an opening on the planning board, and I'm happy to announce that Michael Turelli has agreed to join our planning board, and Mike is here tonight to introduce him to everyone. A little bit of Mike's background, he works at the Fortis Arty Stewart Airport right now, prior to that, or I think it was prior to that, was the partnership?
Well, it's the Partnership Development.
Okay, the Partnership Development, where his job was business attraction, and was that in addition to the partnership, or is that the same role that I'm thinking of?
It was a little bit different, but the partnership was the same role as the Partnership Development.
Okay, so for the partnership, we all know that's the economic development arm for the county. His job was literally to bring business to Orange County. So someone that's very pro-business, and someone that gets economic development, and I think that's what we need, and I'm excited for it, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the planning board. While we're on the planning board, we are going to have a joint meeting next Monday night with the planning board, our work session, as soon as I get confirmation. Mike, thank you very much. Anything you want to say on the record?
Well, just thank you very much for the opportunity, I look forward to it. Been a Village resident now for about six years, and looking to stay here, so looking forward to working with everybody.
And he lives right behind Village Hall, so there's no excuse to miss me. All right, can I ask for a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome, and congratulations, Mike. All right, next we have the BOSI's SRO Officer Agreement. This is, BOSI's, as many of us know, is going into the Arden Hill campus, Arden Hill Campus and School. This is the agreement we've worked out. We still have to work out some agreements, and looking at some things, I don't know, Chief, is still looking into certain things in his department, but this is the agreement that's been worked out, and for BOSI's purposes and our purposes, we want to get this voted on. It probably won't be signed until we have the insurance company and the other things look it over, but it's something that I believe will be a good thing. Did you want to speak to this?
No, I just think it's another example of BOSI wanting to be a good member of our community, you know, in concern with public safety, not say there's anything bad going on at BOSI, but in the Village, we have to respond either way, so this gives us a tool there to hopefully cut down on any necessary responses.
Absolutely. All right.
Mr. Mayor, let me suggest this, because I've been in touch with the Chief, too. We've discussed some of his concerns. Do you want to approve this subject with final review and approval, the Village Attorney?
Absolutely.
I think that would be an appropriate action.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I just want to get it on record, just so BOSI knows that we're serious about that.
Unless I have any substantial issues, be authorized to sign it.
Okay. Do we need to read through this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Is that the answer you wanted?
Yeah. In the three and a half pages. Yeah. All right, can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion to approve based on Attorney's final review and approval, Stephen?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign his final attorney review.
Yep.
So moved.
Understood.
Second.
Any other discussion? Chief, I know that you're here, did you want to make any comments on anything?
There's a few things that still need to be corrected.
Okay. Excellent. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to trustee comments, trustee Gerda.
Well, we have, water crews are working on, crews are working on a pump at the Green Hill Reservoir Site, and have contracts performed to leak detection survey of the water system. That's my report for water, and I believe the prospect reservoir is about one inch, and the Green Hill Reservoir is on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Trustee Stewart?
Everything in the DPW was under control.
Trustee Char?
I just wanted to comment on solicitations at people's homes, that the Village does have a solicitation ordinance, and they need required permit to solicit for selling services, shall we say, if people are calling. We had a couple of recent incidents, incidents, excuse me, involving blacktopping. So just reminding everyone that someone comes to your door, offering to sell some sort of service to you at the door, and when you should make sure they're permitted to do so, make sure you get an estimate from them, and before any kind of work is commenced.
That's it. Trustee Smith?
I just actually want to say, but like, the, a couple of things, it just went on at the senior center. at the senior center, right now, this week, is the senior prom going on over here.
The senior prom at the
Yeah, but believe it or not, there's eighty, last year they had over eighty people that participated. What it is, is the senior class at high school, a group of whom, they, they sponsored this prom at the senior center, the fourth senior, they don't necessarily have to get, like, the first year, this is, this will be the third year that it'll be indulged, the first year, they didn't have a big turnout, they had about twenty people that showed up because they were all worried about, you know, like, oh, I got to get a tuxedo and all type of stuff, so they downgraded the dress-up requirement for it, and so last year they had more people than they had allocated for, and this year they have actually more people than they allocated for and had to go back and, you know, up the numbers. So, anyway, it's a good thing, and then they also just came back from a trip, they went to, for a week, down to Tennessee, to like the Smoky Mountains, and they went to Nashville and all that stuff, and, you know, the reason I'm bringing it up is just because, I mean, the, the, the senior center, they, they are usually overbooked on all their trips, but just to give some kind of an idea, and like, they tripped when they went to Tennessee for a week, it was about five hundred hours, it was under five hundred hours the total cost of the trip, round trip, and it wasn't subsidized or anything, you know, and everybody that went, you know, had a wonderful time, so.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Sewer report, crews assisted engineers with the Manhole, Manhole Sewer Survey, crews assisted a contractor in cleaning tanks at the sewer plant, and a pump, pump was replaced at the missing pump station. Oh, another comment I'll make for tonight is I want to congratulate John Ferguson and Ryan Ronzoni, two students in Goshen who attained the rank of Eagle Scout this weekend and agreed Eagle Ceremony and, dynamic individuals, I know both of them personally and they really are what Eagle Scouts are, what we all think of Eagle Scouts as being. All right, I'll open up the citizen comments.
One other thing I want to add, Memorial Day Parade is two weeks from today, I believe?
Yes, good call.
Chief, what's the route, because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Starts at the county government center, Erie Street, turns right onto Main Street, right onto North Church Street, left onto Murray Avenue, left down Grant Street to West Main Street, to the square, to South Church Street, then we disband, we reassemble in the church park for services, which will commence at twelve, and upon the conclusion of the services, that's the event for the day.
What time does it start? You may have said that.
Eleven AM step off, they want you to line up between ten and ten-thirty AM.
Perfect. I didn't even notice for that.
It's the same every year.
It's early up here being approved or something like that. All right, citizen comments? Yes?
Citizen question?
Yeah, questions, comments?
What's the status of the Martin Luther King Street?
I am waiting for the individuals from the council to put together a letter to distribute to businesses on Park Place, and that's pretty much it.
What sort of letter?
One that says to businesses, this is what we're looking to do, this is why we're looking to do it, we want your comments, we want any feedback that you might have.
Oh, so this hasn't been resolved, then?
What do you mean hasn't been resolved?
I mean, the village board hasn't resolved to actually do this, it's still a work in progress.
Well, certainly it's a work in progress because it hasn't been finished, but the village board agreed to do Park Place, but there's a process that we asked them to follow in terms of making sure the property owners on Park Place were on board with it and getting feedback and anything that those property owners might have. So, that was my last meeting that I had with individuals from the council, and they said they were going to get a letter back to me.
So, how will that unfold, what sort of a threshold is there if, if there's a go-forward or a drawback?
I really, I can't comment until it actually happens, you know, I don't know what the response is going to be, you know, I don't want to make any guesses or assumptions based on what could or couldn't happen in the future, but I know there's five people, Chris wasn't on the board, we discussed it, there's at least four people in front that said publicly that we were in favor of that, so.
Is there a routine, a traditional routine that you're using as a?
I don't believe this has been done in a number of years. Typically, if there's like a new street, then it would probably just be a simple resolution or the village board saying, we're going to call this street Worship Lane, for example, or Worship Court, but for a street that's pre-existing, has people's addresses, business addresses tied to it, it's a much more significant change because it could potentially be disruptive to business, so I think the question is whether we're going to go the route of a surname under the word Park Place, where it actually changed Park Place to Martin Luther, King Junior Boulevard, that's the question, that the business owners need to let us know and anyone that lives there, what kind of impact one thing would have or another, you know, we don't want to do anything that's going to impact anyone's ability to do business and the best way to get that feedback is through some mini letter.
Could you elaborate on what you mean by disruption?
Meaning if my business stops getting its mail because the name of my street changed.
Wasn't it resolved that you were going to use both names for a number of years?
Not resolved, we said, we have different options, we want to engage the people that live on those roads or do business on those roads.
There is some history here, because I was on the board for the first time, because I happen to be a member of the, I mentioned, almost for twenty-five years, and somebody in the Dykens Fire Company thought it would be a great idea to change that road to Dykens Drive, and we voted to do that without a lot of discussion, and it turned out that King's Act, it was both the Sewer's Prom, King's Act, and they were, they were not happy people. They were not happy, they had to change the address on all their trucks, they had to change their letterhead, and so, it caused some hard feelings and some disruptions, so I think this is the better way to go than to that.
Might I just point out again, as I have in the past, that the way I've observed that this is done in other municipalities and cities is they just retain the name of the old street, add the name of the new street to it, you know, one above the other. Hundred and twenty-fifth Street, for instance, and Martin Luther King Boulevard, Sixth Avenue and the Avenue of the Americas, I could go on and on, but in other cities and municipalities it seems to unfold rather, you know, without any, without any issue, really, people still get their mail.
Well, I think that we may clear that the village board is in favor of that approach, if that's the approach of the council and the people that operate on that street are in favor, we have no issue with that, and I think, to me, that makes a lot of sense, it would probably be the path of least resistance. But that being said, I do want to make sure that those property owners are engaged in the process, because, you know, someone's been there for X amount of years, they're used to things a certain way, they have their letterhead and all the things that I mentioned, we want to make sure that, you know, they're aware that these things are being discussed and talked about, you know, I think that anytime we're communicating with people about a change like this, it's a good thing, and I think sending a letter to them is appropriate, and I think the letter coming from the council that, you know, had eight members here one night advocating for this as a group on behalf of the religious organizations in the community, I think that's an effective way forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Sure, just to follow up on, on what Mr. Hickok just, while it's fresh, what he's just talking about, I would assume you'd have to have a public hearing?
Dave, the best that we do, if we change the name officially, that may be required, have to revisit those requirements, if there's just going to be a sub-name, if you will, board resolution is sufficient for that.
And, and the second part of that question is, council was going to do some research about the renaming process, where do we stand on that?
Well, Clark Strobel is not here, one of the issues was to contact nine-one-one because that's a, becomes a significant issue and, and doing another error in the village where it was our understanding, road was one name and when nine-one-one call came in, it was actually another name, so obviously that, that's a significant issue that needs to be addressed, it may be a short street, but we want to make sure the nine-one-one people, emergency responders know where to go.
I know there were even issues with that with vacant land.
Correct.
On the connector road, Matthew Street.
Correct, absolutely.
Our class happened to property, this stuff got renamed.
Mixed up, if you will, and what was what officially.
In fact, we have a lease under one designation that had to be changed when it was renewed because the village changed the designation of this property, entered on two oh seven. So, so aside from that, there are no other legal issues?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay, the questions that I had tonight, just following up on, on the leak detection report, you, you have results from that, I would assume?
They coming yet or are they on the way?
Is that for the dam?
No.
No, I'd have to find out, I don't know. When, when that happens, could those be posted up online? The, the, the report?
Sure, if they're not, just send me an email.
What's that?
If they, if they don't make it up there, just send me an email, and I'll make sure that that happens.
Okay.
I plan on having them online, I'm just saying, if it falls out of my mind, shoot me an email.
With regard to solicitations, obviously there are some limits to the law, what are those limits, for example, political, religious, what, what is allowed, what is not allowed?
I'd ask you, let's not ask, it's in the code.
It's in the code.
So, you know, certain things require a permit, certain things do not require a permit.
Just briefly, for people's information.
I'd rather not say the wrong things while I don't have the code in front of me.
If someone comes around looking for a donation for a political entity which is not one of the recognized political organizations, is that an allowable solicitation?
Well, as I said before, we're not going to get into that because I don't have the code in front of me, I certainly wouldn't want to say anything that might later prove to be accurate.
And that can all be accessed on the Village of Goshen website.
On the, at the last regular meeting that I attended, I had asked a question about the dollars which had been expended for the engineering of the directional bore, you were going to look into it, do you have an answer tonight as to what that code was?
I do not have it in front of me tonight, I do apologize, you don't have that stuff do you?
Of course, I have the stuff for John Ruckus.
I spoke to Ari after that meeting, but I, but I haven't discussed it with him since, so I will speak to him and, at the work session next week, I have no problem.
Since we have our treasurer here tonight, is it a difficult process to just pull the records specific to that piece of
Oh, it's something that we'll be able to get done before, we meet next one, Monday.
Because I would assume it would be the treasurer that would have to
It would, but it's me and the thing I'm going to get.
The, the last item is just a quick commentary, I doubt that anybody's going to agree with me on this, but I take note of the awarding of the scholarship, which is non-annually, I think we all agree that encouraging higher education is, is a benefit, a, a good cause to engage in. I have reservations about doing it with tax dollars, I have no problem with any private entity offering scholarships, whether it be a trust, an endowment, with the chamber, the rotarians, the lions, et cetera, et cetera. The scouts, whoever may want to offer a scholarship is a wonderful thing, however, reallocating tax dollars to that, particularly in these times, I think is something to give some thought to. I understand that it may be late, a late date for this year's scholarship, although I'm hoping not, but I think it's something the board should consider, as to whether or not it's really appropriate for the village to reallocate tax dollars for that purpose.
Appreciate your editorial, I just want to make sure it's clear on the record, it's not tax dollars coming from the Village of Goshen Coffers, it is a community development administrative program that has also worked in conjunction with HUD as well, so it's not like, you know.
This scholarship is not coming out of the budget?
It's community development money, it was a grant that was done a number of years ago and there's
That I was not aware of.
Yeah, it's in the
Nonetheless.
It's in the resolution.